Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Thank you all. It is six o'clock. And that means that on Thursday, May 13th at 6:00 PM, we are calling the meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Unified Elementary School District to order. You can see that Chris has put up the agenda. And so I guess I would ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda? Anyone feels we need to add? Cheryl, I'm going to ask you, do you think we've got enough detail on six? That we need to get into it more or is this sufficient?
But that's, we don't have, we don't need detail. I mean, I can give a brief update.
All right, well, we actually have a couple of items I'm going to suggest we might want to take a look at.
Okay.
But fine. Then I guess we're not hearing any adjustments. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment? I see a couple of people that are not members. Chris, you there? Do we have any? Do we have any notes from anyone?
No, we do not, Jack.
All right, I welcome Crystal Weber to our meeting. There's Crystal. Who else do we have that I'm not, I don't recognize? I guess that's it. All right, well, then let's, let's start with a review and approval of board minutes for April 22nd, 2021. Did anyone see anything funky that needs to be fixed? No misspellings? Almost disappointed. All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes. This is Lynn.
All right. Any, any? Any discussion of this?
Jack, I would say this is Cheryl. That there were no substantive errors at all. And I appreciated the detail in the minutes. But I'm not going to comment on the misspellings, by the way.
All right. All right, so I'm entertaining, I'm going to call the roll with, mostly here an objection. Cheryl, was that a vote to approve?
Approved. Yes.
Yes, I'll win. Same thing?
Yes.
All right. Ginger?
Yeah, sorry, mine was muted.
That's all right. I should mute more often than don't. Jessa?
Yes.
All right. Am I missing anyone? Is, I don't see Melissa here yet, so. Who, did I get everybody? Guess so. Passed. Moving on. 5A principal report. How are you all doing principal reports?
Yeah. I have a public comment to read.
Go for it.
Okay. Hang on, let me get it here. All right, I am reading this on behalf of a parent in our district who just felt they might be a little emotional. And I will, I will try to, I probably will be too. Good evening. I am a parent of a Grafton student. I usually speak up during times of uncertainty. I decided, in light of the past year, all of the challenges and changes that have happened, to take a moment to recognize the teachers and staff. Our little school has been a roller coaster this year, much like others. But the teachers and staff have stepped up and gone above and beyond for our kids. Well, the parents too. They should all know, we see you. We see your dedication. We see your desire to want our kids to succeed. And we see that you are human. As a community, we have learned a lot this year and now know how to plan for a better future. Please pat yourself on the back and know you are almost there. You have almost made it through an entire year teaching through a pandemic. Thank you to all of those who have been part of this year. A lot of changes are still on the horizon for Grafton. Just know that you have made a huge impact on many families, more than could really be put into words. We are small but mighty. I look forward to a new year with lots of new possibilities. And that is from one of our parents here about how wonderful our teachers and staff have really been. And it's not just over the last year.
Well, that was lovely and worth reading. Thank you. You know, so unused to 79. It's great. Well, let's move on then to with that 5A principals report. So who's starting us off? Angela or Liz?
I'll start us off. Hello, everyone. I'll start us off just, and thank you, Jessa, for sharing that. That's really wonderful to hear. We'll start off with numbers and enrollment. So right now Westminster has an enrollment of 143 in person and 11 remote learners. And since our last board meeting, we have had zero positive COVID cases and zero quarantining staff.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Jessa, also. That was very sweet. My like, my like heart went into my stomach like, oh no. And then it was something so great and then like my heart and my throat. So we welcome two new students since our last board meeting. So our total enrollment is 51. So there's 41 students that are, sorry, 45 students that are in school and six that are remote learning. And since the last report, we have also had zero positive COVID cases and zero quarantining.
Last week, all three through sixth grade students finished their S back, both in ELA and mathematics. Our fifth grade students will be taking the science S back the week of May 24th. Next week, all Westminster and Grafton students will be taking their spring math assessment, which measures academic growth in both reading and math.
So at Grafton and at Westminster, we're going to hold our sixth grade success nights on Tuesday, June 8th at 6:00. And the rain date is going to be the following day on June 9th. And the ceremonies will be held outside and we'll celebrate student growth in their time during elementary school.
Westminster will be holding a kindergarten family Zoom for incoming kindergarten families. We'll be holding it next Thursday, May 20th at 6:00. This will be a chance for our parents to put faces to names, hear about the structure of our kindergarten and ask any questions. We're expecting around 30 kindergarteners next year.
And so Grafton's kindergarten roundup orientation is going to be Friday, May 21st at 3:15. We're going to welcome families outside. And our kindergarten teacher will talk to the kindergarten families, read the children a book. And they're going to get some ice cream. And parents, parents will have a chance to meet staff and ask questions. And then I'm going to bring in the incoming kindergartner, one student at a time, if they would like to see the inside of our building. So there won't be any students in the building except for me and that child. And then each child will leave with a balloon and the book that might be for kindergarten. And there are going to be nine students that we're expecting. Sorry.
Westminster and Grafton are both having field days. This June, Grafton will be on June 4th. It's a half day and they'll dismiss from Grafton Pond. So Angela, is it a half, it's not a half day of school, but your, your field day is a half day?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Probably it's going to be the second half of the day, yes.
Great. And then Westminster will hold our field day on June 11th. It'll be on campus. We'll do a lot of activities throughout the day.
And then both schools are going to have a virtual concert that will be recorded and then also sent home to families for them to watch. And then at Grafton, we are going to have Circus Week, May 24th to the 28th, outside on the Blacktop. And on the last day of Troy Wonderley's residency, families will be able to watch the final performance remotely. And it's also going to be recorded and sent out via email.
We'll give a little farm to school update. This is a grant that we were awarded last year. It, a lot of the work we were planning was put on pause last spring, but we're happy that we're up and running with it again. So it, for Westminster, in alignment with our plan, our goal was to extend the growing season. So we just had an addition of water and power, both to the greenhouse and our chicken coop. So our next steps are to incubate more chicken eggs, expand our egg production with more hens and growing season greens in the greenhouse through the winter. Both of these products will be used to make Westminster breakfast and in the salad bar when we can have that up and running again. This is all in addition to our established teaching garden and outdoor classroom during the school year and summer camp. Currently, we're gearing up to plant our tomato spear seeds. And these are seeds that were saved from plants grown on the International Space Station. They'll all end up in the garden with lots of other plants and seeds on our annual school planting day, which is May 27th.
And then Grafton's farm to school update is that the garden beds are at Grafton. They're small, but we can get a lot packed in there. And in the fall, we planted garlic and winter greens. And we're surprised this spring when they emerged. We'll continue to plant, harvest weed and water through the end of this school year and then into the summer. And the farm to school team is planning a farm and literacy themed event for the fall. And when we're preparing for this, we're going to plant some pumpkins that we're going to use for carving and then squash that we'll use for a soup, hopefully in the fall, that we'll be able to send home to families. The fifth and sixth graders are going to be in charge of getting the area ready for planting. And then the younger students will plant the seeds. More about the farm to school grant is that we've ordered a cooking cart and we're going to be getting a new stove for our kitchen. And both of these will allow for teachers and staff to work with students during school and after school on cooking. And we're hoping to be able to incorporate some healthy eating habits with our Harvest of the Month instruction that we do.
So that is it from us. Are there any questions?
I don't know if I knew about the chicken coop. Where's the chicken coop?
It's on the other side of the garden.
I never noticed.
Yeah, we get quite a few eggs. It's been great.
I'm impressed. Angela, I saw the kids out today over at the, a couple places. I saw them down by the ponds and I saw them over by, over by the, the museum there. I can't think of the thing, but.
Yeah, the nature museum.
Nature museum.
Yeah.
It was kind of nice to see kids in person and out and about. I think it's that shock of recognition. There were actually people that we got to see, human beings. It was really quite lovely. So Melissa, you got a question?
Yeah, I was just curious. Did you say that the kindergarteners aren't going to have a chance at Westminster to go into the building at all for their move up day?
We will have a kinder camp this summer. Will, they'll spend a week in the classroom with the teachers, but we weren't going to do that. We were going to do a virtual information night for families.
So will the parents have an opportunity if it's the kindergarten camp? Or would that just, it's just not happening this year? I'm just thinking, it's a hard transition for a lot of parents to go from preschools where they get to go in and read books to kids and transition into K, even though they haven't been able to do that this year in preschools. But I just think a lot about that, so.
Yeah, and that's really interesting because we've had so many new move ins to Westminster this year. And people have had to send their children to a school that they've never been in, which is really interesting. We were planning to do something more in August when we knew what we could do. And then, of course, I can always do, like I did last summer, when parents reached out and wanted their own tour, when there wasn't other children in the building. I can obviously do that. But it was really something we were thinking of doing in August for.
Yeah. It's just nice that there's going to be an opportunity somewhere for the families that want it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks. Cheryl?
Jack, this is Cheryl. I've got a question, if I may.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. Liz, this 30 kindergarteners is, is quite an increase. And so, and I had heard from the town manager in Westminster recently that there were actually 40 new homesteads in town in the last year. So can you, can you address the source? You just said a moment ago that there's been an increase or new families? Help us.
Yeah, more new families moving in. We had quite a few families move from cities, New York City, Massachusetts, more populated areas, and moved out to Westminster this past fall. And we have a pre-K numbers database that we keep records of going back to, you know, they're infants now and in five years they'll be kindergarteners. And we kind of track our numbers and our families that way. So that's the projected to enroll in the fall.
Pretty exciting, actually. And similarly, Angela, you said nine. Is that kind of on par or, or not? Help us with that as well.
I think that that's, that that's on par for, I think, knowing this time of the year. We also same that Liz was reporting, a lot of kids did come from, not as many as Westminster, but families did come from cities. And so some of them are, you know, they're, they're here now, but then several are going to be leaving. And then some were, you know, we're not sure about. But I, but I, from what I do know, I do think that nine is pretty on par with like the number that we have right now in kindergarten.
All right, well, thank you both.
Jack, I had a question for Angela.
Oh, thank you. I, again, I'm really remiss. I don't can see so many. Go ahead.
Angela, Lynn Morgan. I didn't get the times for the sixth grade graduation. That's going to be June 8th outside. And what, could you give me the details again on that?
So right now, we're looking at either having it outside. Well, it's going to be outside, but either outside on the Blacktop or over in the garden. We've gotten some permission to hold it in the garden if that will, if that'll be able to hold everybody. So we've put out right now for just a head count so that we know. And then how many households we're going to have so that we can make sure to separate them and use proper social distancing. So it's either going to be there and the Wyndham Foundation can get us a generator so that we have some power or we're just going to do it outside on the Blacktop. And that is going to be, yes, on June 8th at 6:00.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We speak up because I can't see you. Let me ask you, Angela and Liz, if you would make sure to send out invitations to the board members. You know, we've all been so isolated from the kids this year, really feeling it. And, you know, I would like to try to make these things in person, but I'll probably need a prompt. And I think that'd be the case with some of my colleagues. That's just my personal request, but I bet I speak for others.
Absolutely, thanks.
All right. Gosh. Well, moving, I guess we're moving on then. That to, is it five? Where are we, 5B? What are we at here? Oh, finance, yes, 5B. And because I did see that Flora was here, so she, that was wants to tell us what's going on.
Hi, good evening. I am here. So I need to start with asking the board to authorize Ms. Angela Cartier so she could be the principal authorizing the student activity account.
I'll entertain a motion to that effect from someone. I see Cheryl's hand up. And Lynn is seconded for the record. For, you want to explain what the problem is here and just real quickly? So we move to.
So the student activity account has two signatures to manage the funds of that account. One of the signatures is treasurer of the board. And the second signature is the school principal. In order for Angela to use the funds of the account, she needs to be authorized as a new user of the account. So we could remove the principal that used to be authorized. They can't remove one unless the board authorized for them to be removed and then add the new one.
All right. Do we have a treasurer record for this? Or is this the treasurer of the district you're talking about? This would be.
Paul Harlow.
Harlow's the treasurer of the district. I didn't think we had a board treasurer. All right. Then we have a motion to that effect, a second. Any further discussion from anyone? Moving on. Roll call. Lynn, what say you? You're still muted. I'll tell you what, you're going to waive, waive your assent and there we go. Cheryl?
Hi, yes.
All right. Ginger?
Yes, I approve.
All right. Melissa?
Yes.
And Jessa?
Yes.
All right, didn't miss anybody, hopefully for once. Good. Then you got your authorization. Flora, anything else on this we need to deal with?
Not on that topic. So we are still having some warrants pending for some reason. When you guys sign the warrants, maybe as a system issue, but it seems it takes only one signature. It's not showing like anybody else has signed it. And if it passed, I think four weeks, the warrants expired, so we need to resend them again. Marlene is going to be working tomorrow and sending them because I think, if I'm not mistaken, Lynn was trying to sign them. And it was just saying that they were expired. So we need to work on reproducing them again, sending them again. And maybe you'll need two signatures again.
Yeah, and I'll remind people, it doesn't work on Safari. I think it works on Google, but I'm not even sure if it works on Firefox. So that, that's a bug in the system. What I would ask you to do is maybe, oh, yes, Lynn?
I've been using Safari when I go into my Gmail and I've had no trouble signing the warrants.
Oh, really? Because I had problems earlier, so, or didn't do it today. I don't know.
I wonder if actually that somebody's using one system and the other one, and you might think that it's taking the signature and maybe it's not taking it because I know you guys are really good at signing it. So it's just so weird that it's only one signature there and not the second one. And they're old. Some of them are from November, December, January.
Oh, that's not okay.
It has to be a system issue.
Tell you what, why don't you have Marlene give me a ring tomorrow and we'll just, we'll do them in real, I'll do them in real time and then have Lynn, Cheryl, you know, whoever's available between the two of them be your pinch hitter for the second signature. We'll get it all done tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, because that's kind of goofy.
And then for contracts, we review with HR. We sent out for a sort of 35 contracts. Out of the 35, we got 27 back. We still have eight pending, four for each of the schools.
Four is high, isn't it? Chris?
Yeah, it's a, it's a high number for each school, considering how many teachers you have in each school. But we're getting higher numbers from all those, for most of the districts this year in regards to teachers either holding off and they've asked for a waiver until June 1st or they're just not coming back.
Resignations, we only have three, two from Westminster, one from Grafton. And then we have one person retiring from Westminster.
All right.
Extensions, we don't have any extensions for neither of the schools. And our last topic is the town assessments. We sent all of the final invoices to the towns. I want to appreciate the last payment of the town of Westminster. They actually did their final payment two weeks ago. And we sent the invoice the first week of May, so we are really grateful for that. We still have the other three towns pending, but they do have to the end of June.
I do see that our, our district clerk and our town clerk for Grafton is on the line. I don't know if this is, if there's anything that helps here to move that process along. Kim, are you, are you, are you alive?
I'm here.
Yeah. I put the order in and we'll, checks will be cut on Sunday. So I'll be able to process it and send it out to you probably Monday of this coming week. So you'll have Grafton's.
Thank you.
There you go. All right. Thank you. Anything else we got on, on this item?
No, this is good for me. Thank you.
All right, so. And thank you for, for going and for talking to us on this. And we're on to, to another item that you'll probably be talking about, which is 6A. For, go ahead, tell us what's up. This is, do we, do we need, is there an action item here for us on this?
I believe you've already done that one.
Okay, I was going to say, I thought we, I thought we took care of that, but. All right. So now we're to the meat of the meeting, which is six, not actually 6A, it's 6B. And that is the update of the state board and the withdrawal and what needs to be done. And Cheryl, I'm going to have you summarize and then maybe add my own two cents as we go forward.
Well, I'm happy to do that. At the recent meeting of the State Board of Education, I think everyone knows that Westminster made its formal appeal to be allowed to form its own school district. That was approved with a series of steps that need to be followed. And the first of those is that an election of a new town school board needs to be held. We're, the town of Westminster is in the process of figuring that out and is working with the attorneys to figure out the dates for that. My best guess, and I will tell you that it's not official as yet, is that an election for three school board members, the number three having been determined by the State Board of Education, will be held probably in late June. A step following that would be that newly elected board would work with the WNUESD board to determine the resolution of the finances. That is, for example, the debt that is Westminster's debt having to do with the building of the gymnasium at the center school some years ago now. And, and all along, we've known that this is, people use the metaphor of a divorce. It really is a very friendly separation here. There's really no dispute about anything. But we need to document this kind of decision-making process for folks, including for the State Board of Education. Once the terms of that agreement have been established, then another next step would be to take that financial agreement to the voters of Athens, Grafton and Westminster for that to be approved by the three towns. Just to formalize that, yes, Westminster has taken back its debt, that that does not belong to Athens and Grafton, as an example. And we anticipate, at least in the town of Westminster, this will affect Athens and Grafton specifically, but we believe that in Westminster, on that same ballot, there will be a request to the voters to approve two additional board members to get Westminster back to a five-person board. That allows for more shared responsibility in terms of committees, more engagement of the community. It just opens more doors for more participation. And that's what Westminster has had for a long time, a five-person board. But that can't be done in the first step as by the, you know, the requirements of the State Board of Education. So that, that vote in August, another special election then, would include the approval of an expanded board and would also include an election of those additional candidates. Then those people would, would serve in the planning process, would work to help develop the budget, would work with the WNUESD, would work with the supervisory union, would do all those normal things, but would not yet have full authority to manage the affairs of the school until the following July, July of 2022. And these are the steps that the State Board of Education has put in place for us. I would add one more date.
Hold on, sorry.
One more date is that, as I outlined, you know, a couple of elections, one in late June, one in August, I think. Then we, the people of Westminster, through our representatives, by that time it would be through the elected town school board, would report on September 15th to the State Board of Education that all those things have properly occurred. You know, what we had to, what had to be demonstrated to the state board in the, in the request officially was that the students in the town would have a quality education that meets the standards of the state, meets the standards of the agency of education and the state board. And that they ascertained we could, of course. And then they outlined these additional steps would be electing a board, coming to an agreement on the finances. And then all of that was. and then all of that would report back to them, as I said, September fifteenth. Uh, and then, one more step, um, thanking the volunteers in advance who will serve as school board members. There will be yet another election at town meeting time, uh, in, in March or February, whichever it is in twenty-twenty-two, that would, um, either elect new board members or reelect, however that all works out. And it will be that board elected or already in place because of their terms, having run, you know, whatever it is, two or three years potentially, or one, whatever the sequence of that is. But whatever that board is officially in place as of March of twenty-twenty-two will be the board that takes responsibility for the town's, uh, school, uh, July of twenty-twenty-two. And throughout this process, um, we remain a part of the Supervisory Union. I will say that that's one more formality, uh, that, that, um, the State Board needs to take action on. But one of the la- that, that being whether Westminster, Athens, and Grafton would all remain part of the Supervisory Union through this process. And one of the last comments made by John Carroll, the Chairman of the State Board of Education, in that meeting, um, where Westminster made this request, was essentially to say there's no issue about that. And that's certainly what we hope is the case, that we all continue to be a part of this, um, highly effective Supervisory Union. So I hope that wasn't too much, Jack, that's, that's, um, at any rate a summary of where we are right now.
Well, I'm going to jump in and say, but wait, there's more. Um, and, cause there is, the, uh, we're gonna have a couple of interesting sort of logistical challenges. Uh, because you're gonna have a board that's gonna be elected in March that won't have, uh, legal authority until July, but I wanna make certain that they're full participants from that March election, uh, until July. And, and people that were with us back when we had the original forced merger will remember that we ran sort of, we, we essentially invited the dis- uh, the, uh, the disenfranchised members of the, uh, of the town boards to participate, uh, in meetings and try to run things as close to by consensus as possible so that we could fuzz the issue of, uh, whether or not, uh, the legal board and the, the broader community. Uh, you know, we, we, we try, we try to make that as seamless as possible. I'm envisioning something similar when, uh, after that board is elected, so I'll ask people to, to bear with me, uh, on that process. So that's item one. Item two is that there's going to be, we, there's, there's gonna be a meeting on the nineteenth. We don't know the, the time of our meeting, but it's going to be to have the, uh, the State Board of Education in its wisdom decide if, uh, we are one district or two town districts, or where we're going to be assigned and a whole bunch of other fun stuff. Now, I've had a couple of conversations with the AOE on this matter, uh, looking for guidance. Sent a note to, uh, John that has, he hasn't responded to yet. But it's my impression that they're going to want from us, both the letter that you all signed, or at least the Athens and Grafton's folks signed, uh, asking for the district to remain intact and specifying the reasons. They're also going to want the same evidence that we run a functional school, uh, which means that the attendance material, the, uh, the, the most recent, uh, scores, uh, and essentially the same things that Lynn and Chris, you'll remember, we put together for, and, and actually, uh, Nicole, uh, who did the bulk of the work there that week, uh, put the same thing together for that meeting. And we probably will wanna get an email, uh, to that effect in the next, in the next several days, because the nineteenth is gonna come up quick. That's item one. Item two is, uh, when the separation occurs, uh, we have to talk about governance. As you all may remember, uh, there has been no town or district approval of our articles of agreement, cause they were imposed and we didn't like anybody imposing them. So we are going to have to, uh, have a meeting of the remnant district to approve a set of articles of agreement. Most of this is pretty standard boilerplate stuff. I've even got a, I've even got a draft that I've sort of crafted for discussion purposes, but, and that'll circulate to all of you in the next meeting. Make a commitment on that. But one of the items that we have to decide that might be interesting is how we're going to, how we're going to, uh, staff our board. Are we going to do a two and two? We're going to do a three and three, the way that this, the articles are written? Or do we wanna do it by population and have, uh, town-level elections as opposed to, uh, as opposed to a district-wide election? So in other words, uh, Athens has four hundred and seven hardy souls in it, according to the census, and, uh, Grafton has six hundred and forty-two, I believe it is. So do we have a three-two board elected by town? Or do we have a three-three board elected in common, the way that we've been doing it? And I will be looking for some guidance on this, cause I, I don't know what people wanna do and I don't know what the towns wanna do. Uh, so that's one item. And the other one will be, is there a way for us to do some of what we do in town meeting? Or pre-town meeting, how are we going to, uh, how are we going to give people a voice in their governance? Uh, do we have a common, uh, common meeting on, on, on pre-town? Do we get a bunch of videos and put them in rooms at Athens and Grafton and try to run something collectively? Uh, I don't know how we're doing it, but I'm going to be looking for, for some input on that. And, uh, uh, we may just set up a separate committee to get that done, but I'd like to have that, that process track concurrent with the, uh, with the Westminster stuff so that, uh, come, uh, March, uh, everybody knows what's happening. There are budgets that, uh, will formally ha- have to be jointly warned, I think, by the, by this board and the new Westminster board for, for Westminster and, uh, the, uh, and for, uh, the remnant district. So it's gonna be a little funky, we'll probably spend some legal money, but just letting you know that, uh, we are the first to do it. And as, uh, as, uh, Sean, our lawyer, said, it's a dive into the unknown and good luck. So there you are. So that's, that's it, I guess. Uh, uh, any discussion on this, any questions? Cause God knows I would wanna have some. No brave souls? Well, we'll, we'll go over this again, I suspect, in, in, uh, at, at, at our next meeting. But I just, uh, and, and I will try to have some sort of draft level articles. And I, are you, are you planning, uh, Cheryl, to basically just pull the old, uh, articles from the, uh, from, from, uh, from the old Westminster Town District? Are you thinking you're going to be writing something new?
Actually, Jack, we've been advised by council that we don't need articles.
Really? So you don't need a governing document?
Nope, that's what we've been told.
Well, gosh, I, I look forward to seeing that work. All right, sure, why not? All right, I guess it is, cause it would default to what you had before, is, is probably his thinking on that. All righty, uh, on to seven. Seven A, appointments, resignations. Who wants to take this? I've, uh, I think this is you, uh, Liz.
Yep, so we have, um, some new hires that we're excited about. I had our, one of our current fourth-grade teachers, um, will be moving into some other, um, phase in her life. I have a resignation letter, would you like me to read that?
Sure.
Okay, and she said, "I'm writing to inform you that I'm resigning from my position here at Westminster Center School after the year twenty-twenty-twenty-one. Thank you so much for everything for this past year. I will be forever grateful to have been a teacher at Westminster, learning from many talented teachers and colleagues." Um, we have a new hire to be, and there were some grade-level shifts with, with our staffing per teacher request, so this new hire will be filling a fifth-grade position because our other, our fifth-grade teacher, Aldina Wenzel, is moving into a different role in the SU. So we had, um, Aldina, um, so we have a new, a filling, a new position in fifth grade as well. So Megan Marcucci will be our new hire. She's a recent graduate from Keene State. She's been teaching remotely this year, we've been teaching remote first grade. She has experience with upper elementary through her student teaching. She's familiar with our Reader's Workshop. And she really shared her strong values on relationship building and creating positive classroom community. And during her interview, she just exhibited such energy and enthusiasm to grow as an educator that I believe she'll be a wonderful addition to Westminster, so I'm excited for her to join our team. Also, um, Joe Smith will be retiring. And we have found a new school counselor, Nicole Thomas. And she'll be joining us from Sheffield Elementary. Nicole was interning at Sheffield. And mid-year, she was asked to cover a long-term substitute position as the school counselor. And she comes to Westminster with just glowing reviews. Some notable strengths, um, during her interview were being connecting and from her, um, references were connecting with students and families, sharing her calm energy during the busy times of stressful school days. And we are just thrilled for her to join, uh, Westminster.
Sounds good. We have, uh, these, we don't have to formally, uh, accept these folks. Do we, what's, what's the prot- protocol? I can't remember the last time we did this, uh, last year. Did we have a formal vote to, uh, approve? What did we do?
Usually you approve the resignations and approve the hires.
Thanks, it's, yeah, been a long day. Uh, then I'll look for a, uh, a motion to do that.
We need to know the name of the teacher at Westminster that's resigning. We heard the letter, but not the name. Oh, I'm sorry, um, Polly Gray.
All right, so I'll look for a.
And, and, but, but just a related question before we go to the motion. Um, it was said earlier that we had two resignations and one retirement. I keep hearing one resignation, Polly Gray, and one retirement, Joe Smith, at, at Westminster. Can you clarify, Liz?
Yep, so we have Polly Gray who's resigning. We have Aldina Wenzel, who will be shifting roles in the SU. Yep, and we also have, this happened, um, in this resignation, Christine Bielsi resigned before contracts were sent out. So we were able to submit a contract for, um, Amanda Mayo, who was already in the district. And she moved from special ed to regular ed, so she'll be a classroom teacher as well next year.
That makes sense. And, and typically in the motion, when we, um, when we make a motion to hire, uh, in, in this case, Megan, and you can help with the last name, we typically would say in an elementary position. We don't specify the grade level, giving, giving you the latitude to, uh, do what's necessary there, if I, if I remember.
Yeah, and her contract does say elementary teacher. I was just specifying as in that's where she'll be next year. But thank you for that.
So we're accepting the resignations of Polly, uh, Gray, the res- the retirement of, uh, Joe Smith, and the hiring of, again, the names?
Megan Marcucci, which is M-A-R. Let me see, how does she spell her name? M-A-R-C-U-C-C-I?
Yeah.
And then Nicole Thomas.
All right, so do I have a, uh, a motion to do all them thar things?
Don't move.
I see Lynn, uh.
A second to it, by Melissa.
Melissa to it, and that would be, uh, to accept the resignation of Polly Gray, the re- retirement of Joe Smith, the, uh, and the hiring of Megan Marcucci and Nicole Thomas. Is that correct, everyone? All right, any further discussion upon this point? And I guess the roll call happens. Uh, Lynn, what say you?
Yes.
Uh, Ginger? I see a yes, though, you're muted. Uh, Cheryl?
Yes.
Uh, yes, all right, Melissa?
Yes.
And Jessa?
Yes.
There we go, consider yourself, uh, staffed, Liz. Um, Angela, you, you have, you, uh, you have, uh, you have items here, or is this, is, is principal is one of them, uh, is this, is this something you do, Chris, partly? Or, or how are we doing this here?
I wasn't sure if the last time it was already approved.
Well, I, I kinda thought we had authorized you to negotiate a contract. I guess that's what I thought we had done.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I wasn't sure with all the different board meetings, what we've approved and what we haven't.
It's getting very confusing. Um, so then let's just assume, I hope, uh, Angela, you're okay with this. Let's assume that we are, uh, moving to, uh, discuss the appointment of a grade-three, four teacher. Unless you want us to reconfirm your, uh, your appointment.
I would, I would, I would say, let's just, to be on the safe side, um, I would like to recommend the hiring of Angela Caddia for the principal for the Athens Grafton Elementary School, commence in July first, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, uh, any, um, uh, so I need a motion from someone to that effect?
Don't move.
All right, and a second's coming, I think, from Ginger on that. So, uh, any discussion?
There is some from, yeah, this is Cheryl. Um, and the, the last time, actually, we had, we met, we were w- waiting for a recommendation from administration uh, on this, on this position. There had been, and, and, uh, Angela had raised, for example, that it's difficult to be a teacher at the same time that you're a principal. So I'd like clarification, is this a, uh, recommendation, um, that we have a full-time principal again, uh, in, in Grafton? I'd like that clarified, please.
It is, it is my recommendation that, um, Grafton Elementary School, hi, is a full-time principal, Angela Caddia.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate that, Cheryl, you're reminding me, you're absolutely correct. I completely blanked that part of the discussion. Um, so we have, this will be for a full-time position, July one. Uh, so will there be any teaching at all, or is this gonna be purely administrative in this, the way this is set up?
Strictly administrative with some, you know, overall, you know, curriculum leadership that, you know, we all do as administrators.
All righty. Okay, Duke, um, any other discussion on this?
Well, I'll insert again, Jack, this is Cheryl, that when we listened to Angela at the last meeting, she spoke to the difficulty of being in dual roles. And I just think that the, the recommendation of administration to hire a full-time principal, that being Angela, is an outstanding recommendation, and I fully support it. So, thank you very much.
Got it. I saw also, uh, that Ginger had her hand up.
Yeah, I, I just had a quick question. With Angela moving into a full-time administrative position, does that mean that the three-four position teacher is one that she was in that needs to be filled now? I don't know what grade she was teaching.
Yes, I was teaching three-four, and so.
So this position would be filled because you're leaving to be administrative?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I will note for the record that, you know, at one point, we had hoped we would be able to combine, uh, combine this, the teaching and principal, but it sounded very much like that turns out to be much more difficult than we had anticipated. Um, I, I guess, i- is there any further discussion on this, or shall I call the roll here? Um, I'm gonna call the roll. Uh, Cheryl?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Um, Jessa?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
Have I forgotten somebody? Okay, uh, the, the, as, as you all know, the, uh, the screen of names shifts as people talk. And so I'm, I, I can't just, you know, all right, very good. Um, then I guess we're on to the next item, which is the grade-three, four teacher. Uh, this is yours now, Angela, so tell us.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm recommending that Laura Vogel, um, take my position in the three-four. Um, and I'm, I learned in that last conversation with Liz that it's an elementary position, but just so you know that it, she will be assigned in three-four. So Laura Vogel, um, is a recent graduate of Castleton University. Um, she taught in, actually, she did observation hours in my class in. She taught in, actually, she did observation hours in my class in three, four in the fall. And she was going to do it remotely, and then I met her remotely, and I just had to have her come in. She's very wonderful with the kids. And then after that, she needed student teaching. And I wanted her, but they wouldn't let me take her. So Kelly, in grades one, two, got Laura in her class. So Kelly's, or I'm sorry, Laura's been in our school since October. And her student teaching just finished up a couple of weeks ago. She finished up some of her special education student teaching that she was doing at Central and also at Westminster. And then now she has a long-term subposition. And she applied and she wants to teach three, four. And I think that it would be wonderful. She, so because she was in one, two, she knows the second graders that are going to be third graders. And because she was in my room, she knows the third graders that are going to be fourth graders. She's developed a wonderful relationship with all of the parents who love her. She even got flowers before she left. Everybody really loves Laura, and I think that she will be a perfect, like, the most perfect slide-in for Grafton.
This is your first hire, Angela. There you go. We'll, we'll expect miracles, it'll be no, nothing less than that. Alright, I guess at this point, we, again, is there further discussion on this? Not seeing any. Well, again, we'll start with, we'll start with Melissa.
Yeah.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes, I believe I knew Laura Vogel when she was a student, so yes, I approve.
I was gonna say, I think, you know, yeah, Cheryl?
Oh, I absolutely approve. I don't think we offered a formal motion. Well, I think we might have to go back and put a motion on the floor, and we've had all the discussions.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to assume there was a time warp that Cheryl Charles, not that Cheryl Charles made that. And who can I pick on? Lynn, seconded it, is that, is that everybody's common recollection? There you go.
Right.
Alright, so, so now, now you've thrown me off, and I'm easily thrown aside for some reason. Who, who has not had a chance to vote in the affirmative or negative on this? Did I miss anyone?
You missed me, Jessa, and I vote yes.
We can't, you, Jessa, and that's, you know, that black box is throwing me off tonight.
Oh, I'll get my photo in there.
Alright, there you go, that'll, that'll, that'll do it. Alright, excellent. Now, the item that, that's next here is, is actually one I'm a little curious about, which is this transfer business. Who, who wants to take that?
Cher, so we had the two openings, the two teachers, Polly, who is resigning, and Aldina, who is accepting a different position in the SU. And so I had a classroom teacher opening. And Kelly Halick applied for a classroom teacher position in Westminster. And I am recommending approval tonight for the board to approve Kelly Halick as a classroom teacher at Westminster Center School.
Alright, um, you know, I, I, is there any, we need a formal motion to approve this, Cheryl?
Don't move.
Alright, discussion. You know, as, as some, as, given that Westminster will be leaving us eventually, I, I do consider this a fairly thorough poach there, Liz. But, you know, recommend, you know, teacher of the year candidate, and bang, she's gone. I, I, you know, I want to be annoyed, but I guess I can't be for her sake. I'm certain that my, my Westminster colleagues are perfectly happy with this. You know, I, I know how much she was loved by the kids at, kids in Grafton. Can't come back, you know, it's going to be a different district. So as long as she knows that, I guess we're all good. Any, any other comment besides my whining about this?
Do we have a replacement search already well underway?
Yes, there is a posting for Kelly's position right now.
Have you gotten a lot of candidates?
No.
Yeah, there we go.
What grade was Kelly?
Kelly was a combination one, two. The posting's only been up for three days now, so give it some time.
It is my belief that transfers are something that really this board does not have the power to approve or disapprove because this is a unified district. And, and therefore, you know, I, this is, I, I believe this is really a case more of notification of this board rather than asking our assent or dissent on this matter. Just, in case people are wondering. So I guess congratulations to Liz. And I hope that, I hope that, that Ms. Halick has as splendid a time and has as much affection thrown her away from the Westminster kids as she did from the Graftons. So.
Yeah, I guess I would just add, most of what I read from that parent was about Kelly.
Yeah, I know. Okay. So there you go with that. And, and I think, let's see, what else we got? I think that's kind of, you know, as I said, it is, it's really, this is notifying us of that transfer rather than asking for our approval. And that's not because I want to disapprove it, but because I think that's how, that's, that, them knows the rules. Policies, eight, eight. Let me just say, the policy committee met Jessa tonight at, at five. Yeah.
Sorry.
Not a problem. They, what I will tell you is, we're going to do this in a very online fashion. And we will walk people through the process should they want to make comments on policies. We have, we have, in, all policy committee members have a folder in their shared drive, shared Google Drive that has the policies that are being discussed right now. We have two that are, one of which is a requirement for, or maybe both of them are requirements for the ESSA funds. Is that correct, Chris? Chris must be offline for a minute. Will state confidently lacking, my feeling will remember that they're both S requirements, and so we need to get them in. One of them is a homeless policy, and I'm forgetting momentarily what the other one is. The, the joint, the chair of the joint committee is going to be, is going to be Priscilla. And I'm going to act as vice chair and consequieri to get her up to speed on, on all this stuff. And that's the process. Chris, what was that other, what's the other policy? I'm, I'm really am losing it tonight.
One is the McKinney Vento.
Yep, and what was the other one? Chris is, Chris is frozen.
Nicole is saying parent participation.
Yeah, that's the McKinney Vento for homeless students.
Right, and what's the other one?
Okay.
Does anybody remember what the other one was? There's another one. We'll let it go at that, and we'll, 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 the process, just to remind people, under the current protocol is, is, is a two-read thing where they'll bring it before the, bring it before the SU board, or the, the committee will mark it up, bring it to the SU board for, for a reading and revision, and then a second reading for final approval. It will go to the individual district boards for confirmation. As a general rule, policies will be subject to up and down votes at the district level. But unless it's something that has to be done custom for a district for some reason. That's the process we use, and we'll hope it works. So there's a ton of stuff to, you will see policies be an item pretty much on a forward-going basis. Once they start going through the, through the SU, I anticipate we'll be doing two or three of eating at the SU level pretty much through the summer and fall because so much is, was lost, needs to be moved on. And Nicole says it's, it's under code H two, so.
Okay, that one is pretty much the same. Parental involvement, it's, it's just another piece of the law. They both have to be approved, and then I'm going to, they need to be put on the school website so that people understand.
And what I may do is give, we may do is give all the boards a chance to make comments. So, you know, there's that ability, so people can take a look at them early. But have it worked out the details, and Priscilla and I will tidy that up for you all. So that's all we got on that. And I know that we'll have full participation for this board at our next meeting because I'll harass for Jessa because not, you know, already getting five thousand committees.
Yes, I will be there.
Alright, that, that, that was sufficiently embarrassing, I, I kind of intended to be. The, our, the director's comments is number nine. What else we got? Jessa, any comments besides?
No, but I will attend the next policy committee meeting.
Ginger?
No comments from here.
Alright, Melissa?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to welcome the new teacher coming over from Grafton. I can't remember their name, but since they didn't get to be welcomed and voted by us, I just wanted to say that I'm happy, even though I don't know who they are, that they're coming here and that by honoring teacher preferences, you can really create a positive school climate and culture. So I think that's beautiful and wonderful. And I wanted to wish Joe Smith a happy retirement as our guidance counselor heading out.
Alright, Lynn?
No comment.
Alright, Cheryl?
I've got a couple of thoughts, if I may. One is that as I look at the screen, Angela and Liz and Ginger and I were all part of the recovery planning process with Chris Pratt. Lynn was there for a part of the time this afternoon from three to five. And I want to say it was maybe thirty, I think there were maybe twenty-five or so folks involved. This all part of the ESSR funding that Lynn and Chris have done such a good job bringing to the district. And I simply want to say that I think that first planning session with the facilitators that you all brought in, my experience of it was outstanding. I thought it was really well done. And I look forward to the thoughtfulness of that process as we go forward. So that's one. Secondly, I know that Chris, for sure, and only because I was with him in that meeting, has been in meetings all day long. And I just want to thank both Lynn and Chris for your endurance, for your care, for your commitment. So, thank you both. And everybody else, but I just happen to see you two right now, and I know that you go above and beyond, and it's really deeply appreciated.
Alright.
That's it for me, Jack.
Alright, did I miss anyone? I'll, I'll just say again, I've, I've grown to appreciate that, partly in this electronic world and partly just because the way the, the job runs, that I don't think most people appreciate that. The nine to five is not a really good description of what our superintendents do, more like nine to nine. And I, I've grown over the years to appreciate just how much work is required, particularly in a, in the, in the remarkable kind of, you know, multiple district governance process with five thousand committees that we tend to run here. And what it makes for good policy, it makes for democratic governance, the grind, what it does to our administrators, I think needs to be appreciated. I, I second Cheryl's, Cheryl's point. And I, I do, I do tell all the parents and kids in Westminster, they, they got a good one in Kelly. And I, I think they're, they're going to be very pleased with the energy call and commitment she brings to that position. So, good on them. And with that, and reminder, the nineteenth, I'm going to send you all a date, a time, once I get one from, from the, from the SPE. So tell your friends, tell your friends' friends, tell people you don't even like that much, to make sure that they come. If, especially if, 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 if the questions get wonky. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I got one. Is there any dissent from this? Shall we just direct the, good night, everyone?